All right. Good morning. My name is Deborah Campbell and I serve in the role as the City Manager. And I want to welcome you to our April 20th Agenda Briefing work session. We do apologize that the Mayor and Vice Mayor are running a little late, but we expect them to join us very shortly. All council members and staff are participating in this meeting virtually. The live meeting will be streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Access through the YouTube icon on the front page of the city's website are via the live stream. The live meeting will be available on Charter Spectrum Channel 193. You may listen to the meeting via phone at the number 855-925-2801, meeting code 4559. We will not take public comments during this meeting. And now we will begin the agenda briefing. And as you all know, we normally go over a number of items, but we spend a little bit more time on the agenda for the upcoming council meeting, which will be on Tuesday, April 25th. We normally at these meetings also have an Assistant City Manager review the items that will be on the agenda. And then following that fairly detailed review of agenda items, we then go to other items of interest for council and the community. So Assistant City Manager Rachel Wood will be reviewing the agenda work session. And I believe that Ben Woody will also share in presenting information. So I will now turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you, Deborah, and good morning, council members. Launching into the April 25th City Council meeting agenda, there is a proclamation scheduled for that meeting celebrating April 29th as Arbor Day. I'm now going to go into the consent agenda and as is typical, I'm going to go kind of by exception, highlighting a few items. If you have questions on other items, please let me know. We'll be happy to answer questions on any items that I skip over. I'm going to start with item B under consent. This is an item for our Water Resources team. It's a three-year, $180,000 contract agreement with Mills River Partnership to support projects intended to protect or improve the water quality of the Mills River watershed. This is a continuation of a previous 2020 agreement with the same group. Moving on to item C, this is requesting authorization to apply for a $2 million find and replacement loan through the North Carolina Department of Water Infrastructure. It's a 0% interest loan for a term of up to 20 years. Water Resources is required to conduct an inventory of lead or galvanized lines by October 2024. This is a state requirement. If the loan is awarded, the find and replacement project will be performed in areas deemed as underserved communities by NCDEQ and identified as vulnerable using the city's climate justice map. Moving on to item E, item E is also related to NCDEQ. This is coming from our Public Works Department requesting authorization to apply for a $400,000 grant through NCDEQ's highly competitive local assistance for stormwater infrastructure investments grant program. The grant has no local match requirement, and if awarded, it will be used for system mapping, watershed planning, and an infrastructure condition assessment. Moving on to item G, item G is the requested conveyance of Hunt Hill to KL Training Solutions. KL Training Solutions, amongst other programs, provides the My Daddy Taught Me That program in Asheville. You've previously received a briefing from Nikki Reed on this item, and City Council received a memo regarding this conveyance last week. I do want to note that the conveyance was reviewed by the Housing and Community Development Committee this past Tuesday, and the conveyance was recommended in a three-to-zero vote. So this will be brought forward to City Council for consideration on Tuesday. Yes, Councilmember Turner?
Sage, you're on mute.
Sorry, I was part of that review yesterday in recommendation, and Keenan Lake was present as well. And there was some conversation around him being there and with some of the kids as well. And I don't know, I don't know if it makes sense to pull it from consent, to give them a moment to discuss, or will be, what are we, can we ask them to make a public comment? Like, I would like to hear from them, is my goal.
They can sign up for an item on the consent agenda, and it doesn't have to be pulled. They can just sign up. Maggie?
So just do it via public comment, as opposed to having Keenan there to make some comments himself?
No, he can, he, and Maggie, would you please?
Yeah, Sage, whenever they come, just have them sign up under the consent agenda, and then the mayor will ask if there's anyone that would like to talk about the consent agenda items.
Okay, so just use public comment. Okay, I was hoping it'd be a little less strange than just a public comment, but that's all we can do. That's all right. Thanks.
Okay, so that is all I planned on covering under the consent agenda. Council members, please let me know if there are any other items you want us to cover. Otherwise, we will go into the presentation section of the April 25th agenda. Planned under presentations is a State of the Airport presentation. This will be provided by Airport Director Lou Bliweiss. And following that, I will be making a presentation as part of the City Manager's report. The presentation that I'm going to make is a follow-up to the discussion that was held on March 2nd and 3rd at the City Council's annual retreat. And the intent behind this conversation is going to be reviewing and getting your feedback on the draft consolidated strategic priority goals. You may recall that at your retreat, we, being the executive team, as well as City Council, came up with about 70 different draft strategic priority goals. And over the course of the last month, the management team, namely the department directors and then the City Manager's office, have worked on identifying some key themes from those 70 different draft goals that came out of the retreat, and worked on consolidating that list to about 30 strategic priority goals. So if you look at the draft agenda that's attached in today's agenda, we've actually linked under the City Manager's Report section, the draft presentation that I plan on going through, as well as a draft spreadsheet that lists all 70 of the goals that were drafted at the March 2nd and 3rd retreat. And then side by side, there is the consolidated list of strategic priority goals that staff worked on paring down over the course of the last month. So as a part of the City Manager's Report presentation on Tuesday, we do want to get feedback on any revisions that the City Council might want to see to that consolidated list of goals, so that we can then use that information to inform final decisions around the City Manager's recommended budget presentation, as well as our organizational work plan that would go into effect on July 1 with the start of the fiscal year 2024 budget. So just wanted to make sure council knew that those draft goals are linked to the April 25th agenda, as well as the draft presentation.
And Rachel, if I could just interject for just a moment. Do you all think that you came up with 70 goals at the retreat? When I saw the number on Rachel's presentation, I was like, this must be a typo. Surely, we didn't, you all didn't come up with 70 goals, but we really, we really did. And so what Rachel's tried to do is kind of narrow it down, and we're still at a lot. We're down to 30, so we're almost half that. But yeah, it was some, some good work, but I guess it just didn't feel like it was 70 goals. Think, Maggie?
Yeah, just wanted to express gratitude on this one. I'm really excited to see this. I think that this type of information helps us in our role on the balcony, as you all are doing a great job on the dance floor, leading this work. And I think a lot of the goals that are being suggested here look like strategies, and it's exciting, right? Because we've been aligned for a while. We all know that we would need to double down on housing affordability, and so now we're gaining that consensus and did much more strategic and focused work. So I'm excited about that. And then the question is, so the process that you're asking us for is, if there's any revisions or tweaks to any of the suggested goals, that we bring them on Tuesday and we discuss them, or, and I just, I feel like there's a risk of wordsmithing, but also there's real power and precision. And so I definitely have some ideas where some things feel a little bit more framed tactically, and I would like them to be a little more looking up and out. And I worry that it will get wordsmithy if it's just like a five-minute touch during agenda. So curious, could you tell me more about that process so that I don't get bogged down with my contributions, but that, that we can weigh in at the strategic level for which we're elected?
Absolutely, and thank you for that question. So we have options. One of my requests would be, if you have some specific feedback, if you want to give that to me prior to the meeting on Tuesday, I can fold that into a revised version of the presentation, and we can account for that as part of the discussion. And then ultimately, we're not going to be asking City Council at this meeting to adopt those strategic priority goals. We're just wanting to get to a place where we have a better idea of what final would look like, so that, as I mentioned, we can ultimately get to a place of having the manager's recommended budget finalized, as well as the organizational work plan. So again, welcome any feedback that you have. We'll of course incorporate feedback received during the meeting as well, as we work towards having that finalized list, and then inform some of our other strategic documents that help us plan for the upcoming fiscal year.
Awesome. I know that, just to follow up, that we've been talking on the Environment and Public Safety Committee, that we want to spend some time this spring, maybe in our May meeting, really looking at these. So perhaps that's a process as well, that for the committees where these goal areas are most relevant, we could be like the next cut at thinking through this. Not to, to just further the depth and precision, because again, just saying we want to just saying we want affordable housing is not going to get us there. We need to be focused and precise with our nimble resources. So if that's an opportunity, I could see that being a really good way of using our public committee structure to help us with this work.
Yeah, and you're spot on with that, Councilmember Ullman. Actually, if you look at the next steps that we've identified in the slides, you just got this yesterday, but that's, that's one of the next steps that we've identified. In addition to developing the organizational work plan, we want to use these goals to inform some of those key policy areas of focus that would be on the council committee work plan as well.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, and Kim, before you start, I wanted to welcome the Vice Mayor Sandra Kilgore and turn the rest of the meeting over to you.
Good morning. Thank you. I did wonder if, in addition to taking the list of 71, which is a lot, and definitely, as I'm reading through them, I saw some need for clarity for my understanding. I did appreciate the suggestion to take this to committee, but we're not all in all the committees. So I wondered if it's possible to do like a side-by-side sort of memo touchpoint? For example, we've been talking about for the past few years, the tree canopy, and a need for our urban forestry master plan, but not just for low-income neighborhoods, putting that equity lens and looking at our climate justice initiative where it could impact, for example, stormwater mitigation. So I wonder if it's possible that our goals might tie into our plans? So we're not creating really a new work, but alignment of work? And I think that instead of us trying to one-off, it might be easier to put in some sort of memo that works beside this.
We can certainly prepare a memo. I, I would want a little more clarity on, on the level of detail that you want provided. So Councilmember Roni, maybe we could have a conversation, just so I can get some clarity to make sure I'm meeting expectations around that. But certainly, whatever tools you want, and absolutely, our hope is that there's direct alignment between these strategic priority goals. Ultimately, what are those key areas of focus for each of the council committees? And then use this to also inform the, the key priorities that departments have identified across the organization that would go on our organizational work plan, which is really our, our top priorities for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I think what end in mind kind of goal here is to not wordsmith in a meeting. 71 different points from seven perspectives? I think that would be a, a waste of all of our valuable time. However, I do think there's probably a way to do this in advance or in a document while we send it to the subcommittees. So I'm happy to discuss that further with you.
And as it goes to the committees, and then those committees make recommendations for the full council to then digest, so that we're not all duplicating all of the work, but we're using, you know, the collaborative power of our committees to get into the weeds of it.
And, and this is not a one-and-done. I mean, we, we can work on this, because this is, this is helping us decide on work in collaboration with, obviously, with the, with the budget process, but also going into the next fiscal year. So I think we, we've got time. You know, this is kind of our, our first, you know, kind of processing of all that information and good work that was done, trying to organize it and, and help with some general direction. And, and we'll, we'll take it from here, and there's lots of roads that we can go down. So we're willing to go down them, definitely, with you.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. So moving on to public hearings, I'm actually going to let Assistant City Manager Ben Woody cover this section of the agenda.
Thank you, Rachel. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm gonna, you have a lot of public hearings at, at this meeting. You have four, so that, that is more than we normally have. So I'm going to go through each of these and give some high-level detail. And again, if you have any questions, please just stop me or let me know. Katie, and I'm going to have maps I'm going to show as I go through these. So we'll start with our first public hearing, which is a conditional zoning request off of Rest Rock Court, which is a road that, that connects and comes off of Tunnel Road. This is 1.31 acre parcel of land that is proposed to have a, a development, a multi, or affordable housing multifamily development that exceeds 50 units, because it does have more than 50 units, has to come to council for conditional zoning approval. The project itself actually has 60 units. It'll be in a four- to five-story building. It's a new construction. As you can see, the parcel's currently vacant. There'll also be a single-story community amenity building as part of the project. The developer is proposing that 100% of the units be affordable at an overall average level of 80% AMI or lower for a period of 40 years. That's the zoning condition that'll be in place. However, my understanding is the developer is actually targeting a mix of units between 60 and 30% of AMI. Approximately 20% of those affordable units would be designated for youth that are aging out of foster care. So that's really the, the unit makeup and mix for this project. Council previously approved a housing trust fund loan for this project that enabled the applicant to purchase the property, to acquire it. This project went to TRC in March. It was approved with conditions. It went to Planning and Zoning Commission in April. Unanimous approval with one condition, requesting that bike sharrows be installed on the entrance drive. Any questions on this item? Councilwoman Turner? You may be muted.
There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ben, just a heads up that I'm going to ask this at the meeting. I don't necessarily need an answer today, but I was under the impression back from my Affordable Housing Committee Chair days that we expedite projects through review that are affordable. And in recent months, with all of these great projects queuing up, I've been asking folks, is it, you know, are you getting through the process quicker? And are you getting expedited and stuff? And each time, folks have said, I wasn't aware that's a thing. So my question is, is it a thing? Did we actually make it a thing? And can you speak to it that day? Because I'm not sure that everybody's aware it's happening.
Yes, we can. Good, good question, Councilwoman Turner. We can definitely speak to that. I can, I can talk to Will Palmquist about that. Just two points I'll make on that. We don't necessarily expedite the entitlement process. So the steps that a development takes to go to planning and zoning and then come to council, that is, a lot of that's laid out in statutory requirements. So I would say the entitlement piece is, is not necessarily expedited. I mean, there is, you could consider the thresholds by which things have to come to council. So that can be a consideration in terms of how you may expedite something. But beyond that, once it goes into the staff level reviews, so once the entitlement's done, we do have an internal process to try to expedite the building plan review. And certainly, want to make sure that, that developers and applicants that are pursuing affordable housing do know that, are aware of it. So good, good question, and thanks for bringing that up.
Sure, and then I had one more question. So this may be for Brad. We keep saying this project has a set aside for foster, folks aging out of foster care. Recently, we had another project that was targeting a specific population. I believe it was single mothers. And we were told, you know, you can't, you can't actually do that. But so this foster care thing, are we misstepping? Or we're actually allowed to say that and set aside?
Hey, Sage, that, that's an excellent question. So where the limitation lies is in the regulation of ownership. And it is important for us to say that we would not be able to set a limit to say that something can only be owned by, you know, a certain person, or that even ownership was required as opposed to a rental or leasing situation. With regard to how the leasing function actually works, they are primarily bound by the very similar State and Federal Fair Housing Act, which prevents discrimination based upon several protected characteristics. And what you cannot do is essentially discriminate based upon those characteristics. And discrimination goes both ways. So you could not say, you cannot rent to a certain, say, race or sex or religion, or that we are only going to prefer a same-sex race or religion, or those other protected categories. But with regard to something like somebody coming out of foster care, it doesn't fit into one of those particular categories. So you do have more leeway in that to handle it from a leasing situation. I know that's a long answer, but I hope that provides some context.
It's helpful, because I, I support the foster care. I just was wondering if we missed an opportunity with the other group. So that's, appreciate the context. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Melsby, did you have your hand up?
No, that was a mistake.
Okay, if there are no other questions on item A, I'll move to item B. And Katie, again, if you can display the map. This is a rezoning request that includes three parcels that are totaling 5.24 acres. It's located on the south side of Long Shoals Road. The properties are currently zoned residential, single-family RS2. They are adjoined by HB zoning along Long Shoals Road. There's some industrial zoning to the south of these parcels. And then there's some additional residential, single-family RS8 zoning to the east. And one thing to, you know, to key in on, on this particular request, and we've had some of these lately, this is a straight rezoning request. So this is not a conditional zoning request. So if approved, this would take these parcels and zone them to HB zoning. And that would allow for any uses that are permitted in the HB zoning district, in that base zoning district. So that's why on this one, you're not going to see site plans. You're not going to see a, a range of proposed uses, nor will you see or be able to impose zoning conditions on this. So again, just want to clarify, this is a straight rezoning request. Planning staff has reviewed this. They are recommending approval of the request. They found it to be consistent with the surrounding zoning pattern. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their April meeting. They recommended approval on a four-to-one vote. The dissenting voter, the nature of that dissent, was really expressed around just the, the nature of it being a straight rezoning and the broad array of uses that it would allow, including things like drive-through facilities that may or may not be the right character for that commercial corridor. Any questions on public hearing, item B? Okay, and I'll move on to item C. And Katie, if you can display that map as well. This is another conditional zoning request. This is one that the council has actually seen before. It's two properties that total 7.68 acres, located at 3124 Sweeten Creek Road. You can see it's an undeveloped site. The current zoning of the property is residential expansion, which was approved by council in June of 2022. The project itself, it's, there's not a lot of changes to the densities, but I am going to talk about what's proposed to be changed. But the project itself is 77 dwelling units that are located in three multifamily buildings. It'll have a clubhouse, kind of amenity building facilities, includes parking, playgrounds, walking trails, those types of amenities. But why it's back before you is the project seeking to amend the previously approved conditional zoning to make changes to the retaining wall heights, the building stories, and a couple of other minor site changes, and I want to highlight those real quick. The original plan that was approved had retaining walls that were 20 feet in height. You know, because of some of their grading or, or site development constraints, they are now proposing a maximum height of 40 feet for the retaining walls. Additionally, in the original approval, they had building heights that got up to four stories for two of the buildings. They're adjusting those to be three stories in height, so a little bit of adjustment in the height. But I think the bigger change of significance is, is probably that to the retaining walls. This is an affordable development housing, or affordable housing development. All units will be, it will be 100% affordable. So all units will be affordable. They are proposing an average of 60% AMI in terms of their affordability goals. This actually went to, the affordability part of this rezoning request went to HCD, actually, earlier this week. So one thing that was, Housing and Community Development Council Committee approved a $500,000 housing trust fund loan, and that was approved on a 3-0 vote. HCD also considered a land use incentive grant proposal. That was recommended for approval, and that's a little over $1 million land use incentive grant proposal. Both those items will come to council, to full council. TRC reviewed this at their March meeting. They recommend approval with conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their April meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on a 3 to 2 vote. So they had a split vote on the recommendation. They did include conditions in that approval. One, that the applicant conduct a traffic study and implement any required improvements. And two, that the applicant work with the city's transportation staff and DOT to study the feasibility of installing crosswalks at the intersection of Sweeten Creek and Mills Gap Road. This is not too far south of Mills Gap Road. The concern, the two dissenting votes are based on really, I think, the height of the, of the retaining wall, particularly the portion of that wall that will have visibility or be close to Sweeten Creek Road. And I can answer any questions that council has on this item. Okay, and I'm going to move to the last item. I do not have a map for this. Or, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Roni.
Yeah, before I move to the cat cafes, just any conditional zoning, I'm always going to be asking about renewable energy, not just is there a plan for it currently, but just to make sure that the designs don't prohibit future use. So just so it's not a surprise, it shouldn't be.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make sure that Mr. Palmquist is aware of that. Thank you. Our last public hearing, I do not have a map for this, but it is an amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance. We, we have a, a thing called cat cafes. And if you're not familiar with that, that is a, a establishment that can house or contain orphaned, unwanted cats. So it really kind of functions as almost like an animal shelter would. And it's licensed by the state in that manner. But what makes it distinct in Asheville is, in addition to, to having the cats and trying to, you know, find homes for those cats, the facility can also have a cafe, a bookshop, other types of, of uses that are included in there. So think of it as like an animal shelter with accessory retail or eating establishment-type uses. We do allow these, but we only allow them in the downtown, in the central business district. So we have a request from a, a business owner that wants to, to open one of these on Haywood Road. So what this proposal does, it opens up other commercial zoning districts in the city to allow this use. It's, it's pretty consistent. We typically allow those types of, you know, if they work together, we would allow most of those establishments in these commercial zoning districts. So this is just kind of clarifying, clarifying that and cleaning it up. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning and Zoning, Zoning Commission, they did recommend approval also on a unanimous vote. And if there are no other questions on the public hearings, I will turn it back over to Rachel Wood to continue with our agenda review. Councilmember Roni?
Well, I'm looking at the content of a policy change like that. Obviously, the content is the most important, but the impact and the outcome is also something I take into consideration. Is this zoning request perhaps by a minority or women-owned business?
I do not know the applicant, so I'll have to follow up on that.
Oh, I think that could be some good information to share as far as like helping us meet our goals if we can get that information by Tuesday. It's my understanding that it is.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that and highlight that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Moving to unfinished business, we have one item on the agenda that is requesting approval of the FY24 fees and charges for water. And my understanding is we are bringing forward the staff-recommended fees and charges and requesting council consideration at this meeting prior to the City Manager's Budget Presentation on May 9. Moving to new business, new business is the culmination of a lot of tremendous work that's occurred with both the Equity and Engagement Committee, as well as the Housing and Community Development Committee and the Team on Community and Economic Development. So these are two really exciting funding recommendation items. Item A is the Housing Trust Fund recommendations. As a quick reminder, this is our new application process. And so this process is synced up with the county schedule to provide predictability to the development community and provide more clarity on the financial and capital stack of the projects that are being considered for Housing Trust Fund funding. As a part of this first round of applications, we received five qualified applications, and those applications totaled about $5.25 million. On Tuesday, the Housing and Community Development Committee reviewed the staff recommendation and previously received presentations from the five applicants. And they held three separate votes on these items. So I'm going to quickly go through those three separate votes just so that council has some of that context going into the information that Sasha Vertunsky is going to present this coming Tuesday. So for three of the projects, the three low-income housing tax credit projects, Housing and Community Development Committee Housing and Community Development Committee voted three to zero, supporting Redwood Commons, Fairhaven Summit, and Stewart Street cottages as recommended in the staff report. Then the committee had a conversation regarding reimagining D-Rev's $1.035 million request. Staff was recommending that that funding be provided in the form of a loan. And with a two-to-one committee recommendation, the Housing and Community Development Committee is actually recommending a grant versus a loan for that dollar amount. Lastly, the committee voted three to zero, recommending that council direct staff to proceed in negotiations with the developer of the Oak Hill cottages project to more fully develop the plans and the deal points, as well as to conduct additional community engagement. So we'll be coming back to Housing and Community Development Committee and ultimately to city council as those development plans for that specific project continue to materialize. So just wanted to give some context around why there's that three-part recommendation in, in the motion. I'm not sure whose hand went up first.
Jump in. Just curious. So as I'm doing my thorough review for Tuesday, I see that the reimagining D-Review had a two-one. If any of my teammates who were the one wanted to share what was on your mind, that would be helpful.
That was my question as well.
Okay, well, that's actually why I raised my hand. It was my no. Couple of things I was going to ask. So at the HCD meeting, the staff recommendation was to keep it a loan, and I held to that as a way of support for staff. I knew that my fellow committee members were going to vote in support. So I was going to ask, is the staff recommendation going to come to council to still do it as a loan and not a grant? Or has the staff recommendation changed?
So we're going to keep the staff recommendation as is. We are structuring the suggested motion around the action taken at the Housing and Community Development Committee, but we will also be preparing an alternative motion that includes the staff recommendation, just so that you'll have that for reference, depending on how the conversation and decision-making goes on Tuesday.
Great, thank you. And then, just so it's not lost in the shuffle of so many details in that three-part vote, the three projects that were kind of voted through together, saying yes, we support all these. If you are reading about them and doing your homework, please do look at the one, I think it's under Stewart Street. It's a new model that we haven't seen in this community before that is affordable home ownership and down payment assistance. And I just didn't want you to miss the opportunity to learn about that if we're going to kind of fire through these on Tuesday. And that was all. I can offer more context if you want about why. I, this has gone back and forth, loan versus grant for a long time. And to Councilwoman Mosley's point during the meeting, this project was already queuing up before we moved some of the bond money into the Housing Trust Fund. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Mosley, but her point was, you know, since that's when they started, we can still treat it like that. That was the intent and so on. So, and my, my concern is always around the loan versus grant. And I spoke to this in a meeting about whether or not it would frame future phases of this project in a similar way. And I think at the meeting, I will do, I will ask David Nash that question because I'm not clear. And then I see Councilwoman Mosley probably has a little bit to say about that.
Would you like to respond?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So Sage was correct. What I mentioned in HCD, among other things, was that when the Housing Authority originally came to us, they were requesting bond funds, which we willingly gave to them. And then, and in that meeting, they also let us know that they would likely be returning for additional funds. That is what this is. But in the interim, we decided as a body to move the bond funds into the Housing Trust Fund. So as Sage mentioned, that was my first reason for supporting this rare opportunity to provide a grant instead of the typical loan. Secondly, I also mentioned that I believe the Housing Authority is an integral partner for us as it relates to all things affordable housing, including housing of the previously homeless. We also have to always keep in mind that the Housing Authority issues vouchers. So anytime we have for-profit developers coming to us saying they will accept vouchers, nine times out of 10, those vouchers will be coming through the Housing Authority. And in fact, two of the projects I believe that we will be considering on Tuesday have partnerships with the Housing Authority. So if we delay the Housing Authority's ability to rebuild or to take care of the units they already have, it could potentially cause a logjam in all of the affordable housing issues that come before us. So that's my broader reason. And to me, that would set them apart from any other developer coming to us subsequently going, well, you gave the Housing Authority a grant. So the Housing Authority is unique. That was my main reason for supporting the grant.
Just one last thought. Maybe some of us on HCD are really familiar with this policy, but maybe someone could email out the Housing Trust Fund policy for everybody's background.
We can provide that in the follow-up materials.
Okay, so does anyone else want to comment? On this? Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Last on the agenda is another very important funding decision. This came out of the Equity and Engagement Committee. This is our strategic partnership grant funding for the upcoming FY24 cycle. On April 18, the Equity and Engagement Committee reviewed the Evaluation Committee's recommendations and made funding recommendations for full city council consideration this coming Tuesday. The committee unanimously approved in a three-to-zero vote the Evaluation Committee's recommendations to fund six agencies at a total of $356,209. Part of that motion also included a request for staff to come back following the conclusion of the pilot program, which is still underway. Those agreements expire on June 30 of this year. And so to come back with some concepts and a timeline for a potential second round of strategic partnership grant funding following the conclusion of that pilot program. We are estimating that there will be probably around $90,000 available of unspent or unclaimed grant dollars that were awarded as part of the pilot program. And then we have around $220,000 that's unallocated in, for lack of a better term. I know this is not technically fund balance because it's from the general fund, but fund balance for this program. And so looking at what our options would be to have another round of funding in calendar year 2023 for the Strategic Partnership Grant Program. So we'll be providing additional details on that at future Equity and Engagement Committee meetings. But the requested action this coming Tuesday is to provide that $356,209 of strategic partnership grant funding to the six recommended agencies that were recommended by the Evaluation Committee.
We did talk about this at the Equity Engagement Committee meeting, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knew kind of to go maybe and look at that conversation. Some concerns I have is we're moving into some new territory as far as how we're going to allocate our strategic partnership funds. Some positives I see are that we, instead of just having one person from outside of our organization do the scoring rubric, it was 50% outside of the organization. So we had opportunities to get some outside perspective. One of the concerns I have is that the issues impacting our youth are so profound right now. And I know that, you know, our timelines and our limited funds create this sense of scarcity and also competition between organizations. And I, I'm still wrestling with this opportunity to go ahead and allocate the $220-plus thousand in a staggering of the second tier. If you look at the staff recommendation and the scoring rubric, it'll show there's the full recommended. And then there's also a second tier that's like, if we did partial funding, these would also be the organizations that would be considered. So I know we're talking about bringing that back at the Equity Engagement Committee. I know as our partners in the, in the community are preparing for summer programming, if we're going to impact the opportunity gap. And also, what we see happening at the beginning of every summer, where there's more conflict and more need for a sense of place and belonging in our community for our young people, I just hope that there's support to really get behind looking at at least partially funding so that our, our other organizations that have been successfully partnering with us that did get funding this year could maybe use our funding as a way to leverage other funding partners in the community. For example, Dogwood Health.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have anyone else that would like to respond? Okay.
I'll just make a general nod that every, I've been involved in SPF funding for three years now, and we never have enough. I don't know how we're ever going to get over this threshold of, you know, it's not half a million dollars rarely. So anybody that wants to brainstorm in future ways to get more SPF money, please help us. We have, there's a great need, and some of those applications were incredible, and we couldn't fund them.
Okay. Councilwoman Mosley?
Deborah, is there a way that for some of the ones that weren't funding, I know one in particular that Opera Funds could be used? Remaining Opera Funds?
We, we could certainly use that as an option. I do want to draw attention to, there is $221,000 available that is not currently being recommended for allocation out of the Strategic Partnership Grant Fund Balance. And then at the conclusion of the pilot awards, we're estimating that there will be about $93,000 where pilot agencies did not invoice for the funding that they were approved to receive. And so we could potentially redistribute that $93,000 as well.
Great, great. Kim?
Yeah, so one of the things that I was taking away from our Equity and Engagement meeting was that if we did go ahead and allocate the $221,000 and instead of holding it back for next year, then we won't have it for next year. But a positive is it would give us more time to grow the fund, which is what I'm hearing there may be some appetite for. I did wonder, I don't think we have, I don't want to put the urgency in this to say that we need a recommendation for Tuesday. I do hear some wisdom in trying to get things moving for the summer. But to still take it back to a deeper conversation, what does it look like to have a recommendation to go ahead and allocate the $221,000 to the scored applications that did receive notes for partial funding? Do we have a plan? Does it have to wait? Or can we give support for staff to work on that now?
If I could jump in, I would hope that you all would take it back to possibly committee and have the committee make a full recommendation or get that action of trying to follow all of the moving parts. Did that action happen at, already happened at the committee?
There wasn't.
Committee meeting? When's the next?
We just had it yesterday. So we discussed it, and here's what happened as someone that's done it for three years. We just moved it to this committee. And so Kim was having to learn and catch up and doing a great job to you, but.
I've been following this for eight years, thanks.
Yes, I didn't mean anything by that. I just was saying, anyways, so in the past, what we ran into was, it was approaching the summertime, which is when this great need is in between school years, and we would have, we had nothing to hand out. So I think that's why we've been holding this 220 back for next summer.
I'll just go and say I'm not ready to move forward with that today, so.
That you are, you're saying that you are ready, Antina. Is that what you're saying? You're not, I'm sorry, no. So process-wise, is there, is there council support to bring this back to committee and consider using these reserve funds? Or is there not, is there not support?
I think the idea was to move forward with the recommendation that came from staff, and that was to allocate full funding of maybe $277,000. But with the remaining money from the pilot program, and then what Rachel is calling the fund balance from this year, we're going to reconsider how we can spend that money to fund the groups that were not funded. So there could be a recommendation made on Tuesday concerning full allocation of, I don't know the amount, but then we're going to come back and decide what partial funding would look like.
In HCD, you're saying?
In Equity and Engagement.
And then, okay, so is everyone good with that process?
I'm good with it, yeah.
And we have included language in the motion referring staff to continue working on that second round of funding.
The reason I would say that I'm struggling with the term "good with it" is I can't be. Our, the violence among our youth is a real serious problem that I think we all understand and know. And we find money for a lot of things, but we don't find money for this. And it's not the first year that we've created this scarcity and had competition between groups. So that's why I'm saying, because I'm not okay with it. I would support us moving quickly. I understand it's got to go back to committee, but I wouldn't use the word "okay with it."
Fine, use whatever word you want. I'm just trying to get a consensus here about what, what process we're using. And I, you know, I would, I would say, you know, one of the things that I've seen us struggle with for many years in this, the outside agency funding, is just understanding the city's role in funding these agencies. We have elected to step into this lane as a city to do this, to do this work. This is not, it is not necessarily in our charter. These are not entities that are, are passed through funding entities for a city necessarily. We've elected to do this work. So I don't, I don't, I want to be careful about. I, I think it's good. We have, we have refined it. We have decided where we're going to focus the funds. But, but unfortunately, for the groups that do this type of work, you know, they have multiple funding sources, and that's what they struggle with. And we wanted to step in and help support these efforts because we think it's good for kids and good for our community. But, but I don't, I, I guess, Councilwoman Roni, I guess I'm just struggling a little bit with the language you're using as if we're the only group out there, and if we don't do this additional funding, it's all our fault. And, you know, it all, the buck stops here.
I hear that. I think this is a good opportunity for us to, one, bring youth to the table. Two, because they're the impacted group. Two, look at participatory budgeting in the future. Three, there's, because the process is new, we're going to have to look at outcomes. We have an opportunity to review outcomes, but there is pressure. I'm already getting calls about it, so, and I work with students too, so I'm hearing about it from them. They want to know why the groups that are doing the work on the ground don't have us standing by beside them, at least in a partial way. And so that tells me that we need to keep working.
That's helpful perspective. Thank you. Unless there's any other comments on this topic, I think we've finished it.
Thank you, Mayor. We can now move to council committees. And I believe the city manager is going to provide a brief overview of the April 25th Environment and Safety Committee agenda.
Thank you, Rachel. Yes, we do have a meeting on April 25, and it starts at 11 o'clock. There are three items on the agenda, only one for actual action. We've got an item of food scraps drop-off on the agenda. And this is to update on the program pilot and next steps related to a partnership with Buffalo County to help in the management of the initiative. And that's, as I said, a vote to move forward to city council at the May 9 meeting. So this will not be going to council on the, on the same day, April 25, but at the May 9 meeting. The next item is, next two items are essentially updates. The emergency preparedness and continuity of operation plans. We're going to be providing an update, and principally, this will come from Asheville Fire Department. Jeremy Knighton will be giving that, that update. And just for clarity, these are two different plans. An emergency preparedness, continuity of operations. Obviously, they're intrinsically linked, and you'll see as part of the presentation how they support and leverage one another. And then the Community Responder Program update. We will be having a little bit more conversation about that later on in the agenda when we talk about the effort to address crime in downtown. But we'll have Assistant Fire Chief Patrick Krotup that's going to give an update on that and the rollout and the launching of that initiative. And that will be for information on them.
Okay.
And that will be all that we have for that agenda, other than Ms. Olman, I believe. Ms. Olman, I believe you wanted to either add an item or at least discuss one that you will add informally, so I will turn it over to you.
Great, yeah, I'd love to add an item to the agenda Tuesday. I know it's a little late in the game, but there's a fast-moving potential pilot project that I'm working on. I'm appointed to the county's Environment Subcommittee of their Commission, and so I've been working on that for almost two years, and we've been working on looking at how there are so many residents in our community, particularly low and moderate income folks, who want to pursue more sustainable things on their home, like electrification of their heat source to get off oil or gas or solar on their facility. And there's a lot of barriers to that, one of which is a longstanding known barrier is fair and affordable financing. There's a lot of stuff with terrible interest rates, but that's not a fair way to get this type of stuff into the market. And so many people have been working towards that type of thing. I know our very own Bridget Herring is on the board of something called the North Carolina Green Bank. And this potential pilot program would be to pull together a partnership with the Green Bank, the Blue Horizons Community Council, and the city and the county to test out in the next year, one of these type of low-interest loans that are available to folks with all kinds of credit scores, so that we could see more people able to afford these type of choices. So there's a million details that are not sorted out yet, but it is a fast-moving thing, and the county is considering some, some elements that might move forward in their budget cycle. So I just would like the opportunity for us as a committee, Vice Mayor Kilgore and Councilwoman Smith, for, to share some more, and maybe I can bring some slides on Tuesdays, just because since we are partners in the Blue Horizons Community Council, and we will be reviewing that contract for the next couple of years this spring, it kind of connects in, and so just want us all to be kind of kept abreast of that as it will, could eventually relate to us if this pilot moves forward.
And you're looking to add that to our agenda on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I celebrate you in doing that, but I would really like to look at the slides, maybe ahead of a discussion on Tuesday. So maybe you can get that to us by Tuesday, and then maybe our next month meeting, we'll be ready to deliberate on it or have a conversation about it.
Yeah, and also, there's nothing really to make any decisions about for quite some time. So it's really just wanting folks to all be running in the same direction with the same information, so folks aren't getting out of sync. So, heard you want to, there's a lot of.
How soon can you get your slides to us? If you can get it to us by a deadline on Friday, it'll be fine.
Yeah, I definitely could, because we're talking about it with the County Commissioner Committee, which is Chairman Newman, Commissioner Sloan, and Commissioner Wells. We have a meeting tomorrow about it, so I'll be able to share those. And again, it's, there's no decisions, it's just want everybody to be marinating at the same rate, if you will.
And if you can add any supporting documents with that information, maybe minutes from past meetings, that'll help us be informed.
Yeah, absolutely. And then another, oh, sorry, go for it.
The only thing I was going to say is, is it possible, is it, does it have to be on this agenda? Can it be on the next council agenda? That's what I would like to see, as opposed to rushing this through.
You're talking about it being on a committee agenda, not on the council agenda, right?
Yes, and just an opportunity to inform folks, because there aren't, there won't be anything to decide upon for, for several months, if anything.
So you're just talking about the committee, our committee?
Yeah.
Yes, and it's information only.
Okay, thanks, okay. I was thinking the other way.
Yeah, no, it's, it's really so that if and when something does come towards decision, just more and more people have been thinking about it and hearing about it, so wanting to provide that.
Okay.
Having other people in the loop, so that I'm not the only one of the team kind of hearing.
Okay, thanks, Maggie.
Yeah. And then I did have one more thought, too. I know that later in our agenda today, we're going to hear from both chiefs about this downtown pilot. And I know that on the current committee agenda for Tuesday, we have updates on the community responder side of it. But if there's more that links in with the police department, I think it'd be appropriate for us to be able to dig into that also in a committee meeting at some time. So maybe that's more put in a pen, because we have a lot more to hear on today's call, but I just wanted to flag that that might be appropriate.
Okay. If there are some policy issues related to this initiative, you will definitely come back and see which I'm, I'm sure probably would be appropriate in Environment and Communities at the committee, we will definitely bring those.
Okay, are we ready to go through the eight-week agenda for our quick look ahead? Okay, really quickly, we do have some key items listed on our eight-week look ahead. I'm not sure Maggie or Sarah or Katie, if y'all are going to pull that up on the screen. No, we're not planning to. Okay. So I'll just highlight a few items then. On May 9th, of course, the major item that evening will be the city manager's recommended budget presentation. Also noteworthy on May 9th is our CDVG Annual Action Plan approval and submission. Councilmember Turner, not listed on this document, but I did want to follow up to an email that you sent. Emily Ball is going to be giving a presentation on May 9th with our point-in-time count results, and she's also going to give a status update on the great work that Hayek is doing in their working groups to develop recommendations in response to the National Alliance to End Homelessness Report. Moving to May 23rd, May 23rd is the evening of our public hearing for the budget. This is our statutorily mandated public hearing. There are also going to be two different land use incentive grant considerations that evening, one for 46 Aston and the other one for 3124 Sweeten Creek Road, which is Fairhaven Summit, which Ben provided some details on that CZ earlier as we were reviewing the April 25th agenda. The last thing I'll note on the eight-week look ahead is that we do not have council meetings scheduled for May 30th or June 6th, so we'll miss you for those couple of weeks, but it'll give us an opportunity to get caught up and maybe some of us take some vacations. So that is all I have to cover on the eight-week agenda, and we can now move into other issues and updates, with the first item listed being the Independent Review Committee update, and Jay Dundas is going to provide that overview.
Thank you, Rachel. Good morning, or just good afternoon at this point. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, Jay Dundas, Capital Projects Director, and serving as the administrative liaison for the Independent Review Committee in this capacity. I really wanted to take the opportunity to update you on a couple of items that were presented in the March 28th presentation. Those two items are the schedule for delivery of the reports and the presentation, and then also follow up on a, a contract for modeling the system outage with, with Hazen and Sawyer. Both of these were mentioned in the, in the March 28th presentation. Like to, just to remind you that, that we are, the committee is committed to delivering the report on May 30th, and then we'll follow up, give some time for the, the report to be studied and, and reviewed, and then follow up with an in-person presentation at a council meeting in June. That is still the, the intended timeline. They are diligently working right now to try to process all of the information, and certainly, part of, part of that is employing the resources of a model, a engineering firm that has modeled the water system and will have helped the, the committee to understand the circumstances as, as they related to this winter. We did a tour of facilities last Friday in order for the, some, the subcommittee associated with water systems to get a better understanding of the, the water system as a whole. And so that was very informative for them. And then again, the, the second item is the Hazen and Sawyer contract. We have an on-call agreement with, with several engineering firms. Hazen and Sawyer has been on call for a number of years to model the engine, the, the water system, which helps to inform system improvements, but in this case, will be used to help to further understand the circumstances and to help inform the findings and recommendations of, of the committee. One that I just want to report out that we are working with them, we have scoped the work, there's an urgency around the delivery, and they certainly understand that. And, but the, the cost of this effort is, Ford Hazen is, this contract is $79,000, not to exceed $79,500. It will update the water system model, and then again, recreate the, the, in the model, in the model, the circumstances of the outage, and that will help to inform the findings and the recommendations of the subcommittee. Or, I'm sorry, of the, of the committees alone. And that concludes my update.
All right, there, Mac, Ms. Olman.
So can I try and translate, because I, some of that was in weeds that I was just struggling with. What I'm hearing is, things are moving forward with the Independent Review Committee. A major step that you're doing right now is to use fancy technology to synthesize what happens, so you could have some more effective diagnostic of what created the outage, so that we can come up with strategies to deal with it. That's like the, the main update, and that's the main junction in the process we're at right now. Am I picking up what you're putting down?
Excellent, excellent summary. Appreciate that, yep.
Okay, cool, thanks. Are we going to chat at some point about the internal water after-action review that was shared with the community at WLOS last night?
Seems like a good time.
I personally haven't gotten to read it, considering I haven't seen it yet. So, you know, I've time this afternoon, but, so I don't really have anything to say, but just like, that's a lot of information that our community is getting access to and wondering how us, as the policy leaders, are going to be able to dock into digesting that as a team in the context of what the Independent Review Committee is doing.
And I'd like to tag on to that, just to say a general need to get things before I get the call from ML, WLOS about it. I got an interview request about it, and I just didn't know. And I hear, I understand it was a public records request and stuff, but if we see something that's sensitive, going out via public records request, it seems like council should also receive it then. I, I just tried to avoid the media all night, but, you know.
And I, I, Councilwoman Turner, I, I spoke with the manager about this, and I also spoke to, to the city attorney, Brad Branham, because public records requests moved through their office. And we, this was not the intent to release this, it was a pending public records request for some period of time, but there was not the intent to release this without notification to council. It looks like, it looks like further on down the, the rungs, the decision was made to go ahead and release it and, by folks who didn't quite understand the sensitivity of it and the need to let their superiors know so that they could let us know. So, and, and I'll shut up here and let these folks speak to more about the process, the internal process there, but that's what I, I understand, because I had the same concern as well.
And, Mayor, I think Ms. Roney has her hand up, and then I'll respond.
Yeah, I guess in addition to sharing these questions, a question that's still outstanding is, when was this document finished?
Apparently, it was finished seconds before it was released, which is why it was released yesterday. I mean, you can see that it's pretty lengthy. I saw your comment to WLOS that you've been asking for it since January 5th, but it's not, was obviously not ready on January 5th. It wasn't even barely begun, but, and maybe Ben, as the, as the Assistant City Manager over Water can speak more to the timeline there. But, but my understanding is that, you know, our public records request official knew this was a pending request, and so the moment it was ready, she was ready to distribute it, so.
And I want to, again, I just need to echo the, how important this is. I mean, I was interviewed by the, the crew that we've hired, and time and time again, the problem was that there was an issue with the water situation, and council wasn't informed. And I just didn't, it felt like that yesterday. Again, to hear from the media that there was a, another report already out. So I just want to express the sensitive nature of some of these things, and really emphasize we should get them first.
And I'll, I'll chime in, too. I know, Deborah, you're ready to share some thoughts, too, of, I agree with the sentiments of my councilman, and now that we all have this information, when can we have a conversation about the information? Will there be a presentation on Tuesday? Because I, I mean, we need staff's guidance and expertise to help us and the community digest this information, even if, you know, we're still waiting on the Independent Review Committee. So when and how will we be able to digest this alongside in waiting for the Independent Review Committee?
And when, when you say digest, I assume you mean kind of when can, because it's a pretty technical report.
Yeah.
I mean, we really need someone from, who, who helped draft this to be able to say, in, in summary, this is what this report says.
Yeah.
You know, ears and, you know, so.
Exactly.
Well, there's some of it that's technical and some of it's not. Someone turned off a valve and it wasn't recorded, like this, I think that's a perfectly good question to ask, where are we going to take this to committee? Are we going to have a work group sit down all together about this?
Okay, so I, I, first of all, the organization wants to apologize for how that happened in terms of that information. And in fact, the mayor and I were talking, and she said, Deborah, are you aware of some after-action report? I was like, what? So it, it happened. It is my hope that it will never happen like that again. And in terms of the next steps, if you all want to have a deeper dive and a discussion of that document, we'll be more than happy to try this. Schedule a time for full council, if you want to have a work session, if you wanted to go to a committee, that, I will take that direction from you all. That's the first thing. And then secondly, I hope that you all feel that whether you reach this conclusion at the end of our discussion, whenever we have the discussion, if we have the discussion about the details of it or not, that we shared quite a bit of that information with you at a high level in terms of timelines and things that happened. We may not have done the day-to-day synopsis in the detail that an after-action report reports things in. So generally, you've gotten a lot of this information, but you got a lot of it when we were talking to you all about what we knew at the time. And there may be other things that have been discovered that wasn't documented, because we didn't just have the time to do the diagnostics. So you all tell me, how would you like for us to bring that information back, back to you?
You know, I have a suggestion. You know, we're, we are going to get this big report from the Independent Review Committee. However, this after-action is now public record. We already have the news trying to interpret its meaning on their own. So I think it would be very helpful if Tuesday night at council, under the manager's report, we had someone make a presentation, just sort of touching on the meat of what this after-action, this, you know, kind of summarizing its main points, you know, with the caveat that, of course, we're going to get a bigger, you know, independent review. The Independent Review Committee will have looked at this report as well. So, and may, may or may not concur with all of the findings in it, or, you know, I don't know how they plan to use it, but I know they're looking at. So, but I think because this is already out there, because folks have questions about it, I, I, I think it would be helpful to have someone speak about it Tuesday night, just to sort of hit the high points and, you know, field any questions, and that'll give folks a chance to look it over anyway, since we only got it yesterday. Would that, is, is that all right with folks, if we have at least some, some review of it on Tuesday night? There's no action to be taken. I mean, so that's why I meant to say, let's put it under the manager's report.
If, if everyone's agreeable, we'd be more happy to provide that.
I think that's, that's important, because every time we're not sharing our narrative, the public tends to guess.
Good point.
I agree.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay. Mayor, are you ready for me to move on to the next agenda?
Please, yes, please. Please, yes, please.
Okay, alrighty. Um, so this is yet another, uh, issue confronting our community. Uh, we're gonna talk about a pilot program to respond to public safety issues downtown. And I have a, uh, I use this term a lot in Asheville. I have a village of staff that are going to support me in terms of discussing, um, this item. Um, so Mayor Council, over the last couple of months, we've, we've heard a lot about crime and people not feeling safe in Asheville, especially in downtown. We've heard from business owners, residents, Chamber, Tourist Development Authority, Downtown Business Association, uh, and many others. We know from years of experience that law enforcement agencies can rarely solve or address the complex issues related to public safety alone. Reimagining public safety really is about redefining roles and advocating for shared responsibility and accountability for public safety in our community. At a recent, uh, Downtown Business Association meeting, uh, the mayor outlined several initiatives that the city, in partnership with various other agencies and nonprofits, have implemented to begin to, uh, address crime in downtown that included, and I'll just do a couple of them, uh, such as enhanced law enforcement presence in downtown that occurred between November and December. Budget adjustments to enhance retention and recruitment efforts to increase the numbers of, of officers. And you all are deliberating and entertaining, uh, doing more, uh, in this current budget cycle. Uh, partnering with Buncombe County Sheriff Office to install additional security cameras in key locations in downtown like Cretcher Park. Partner with nonprofits to develop meal sharing guidelines to ensure safe sharing of meals and cleanup of public spaces, uh, after these events. Developing a community responder pilot program led by Asheville Fire Department to complement the county's, uh, community paramedics program. Uh, we'll have, um, Deputy Chief Kretsch, uh, talk a little bit more about that, uh, initiative shortly. So we've collectively done some aggressive things, but obviously we are collectively needing to do more. We know the community is looking to us, the city, to take the lead related to public safety initiatives. So we wanted to share with you a few additional steps we'll be taking over the next 60 days to address public safety with a focus on downtown Asheville. Numerous city departments will be engaged and we'll be working with numerous partner agencies and individuals, uh, on this, uh, 60-day initiative. Staff is also creating a project page to keep the public updated on our progress, which, uh, on our website will be listed as the downtown safety initiative. This page will house information about the effort and help us assess progress and lessons learned. Following this meeting, we will also issue a press release that will highlight, uh, these efforts. I want to assure this council and the community that the efforts in downtown should in no way suggest that we aren't focused on safety across the entire community. This intensive effort is driven by data that suggests a disturbing trend of increases in both property and violent crime in our downtown. The community has asked us, what are you doing to address these issues? We want to provide a response and I would now like to turn it over to the chief Zach to briefly discuss the 60-day initiative and then have, uh, Deputy Kretsch, uh, briefly share information we will discuss with the Environment and Safety Committee regarding the rollout of the community responder program. So now at this time, uh, Chief Zach, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Uh, and yes, I want to reiterate, uh, that the approach that we're taking is data-driven. And driven primarily with what we've seen with rising violent crime downtown, but also rising property crime. So it is our intent over the next six, 60 days to provide a greater, uh, presence downtown, higher visibility. Uh, we will be attempting to utilize foot, bike, and vehicle patrols downtown. That increased presence will result in firm but fair enforcement of violations of the law and any other criminal activity. All incident reports will be reviewed and appropriately assigned for follow-up. We will be conducting evening lighting assessments and make recommendations for new and replacement lighting. We will partner with any private or non-for-profit organization to conduct public safety walks, inner-community cleanup programs. And we will be providing downtown owners with a shoplifter guide, which is basically those convicted of shoplifting. So they have greater situational awareness. So that's just some of what we're going to be doing, but it's highlighted primarily by a very visible presence downtown.
Let's see, Deputy Chief Kretsch, would you like to talk about community responders and?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so the community responder update is currently we have, uh, five personnel that we've selected, um, to participate in this program. Uh, just like, uh, APD will be on foot, uh, patrolling the areas as well as bikes. Um, our focus is to proactive address some of the quality of life issues, um, in the downtown area. We are currently coordinating with Buncombe County, the Community Paramedic Program, um, working on shared resources, communication, and data collection. So we're kind of mirroring doing the same things. And we will run 60 days, um, currently from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
And, let me see, and we will be, uh, looking at the community responder program as an initial kind of test and hopefully, uh, creating this as a permanent, uh, service that we would offer, um, in downtown and potentially even other parts of our community. So the 60-day thing will give us a, a little bit of a, a proof of, proof of concept. There are, um, just a few other things, um, that I wanted to add in terms of this initiative. Um, there will be, um, enhanced frequency of monitoring city-owned and operated public parking garages, including, uh, stairwells, particularly stairwells, uh, in these facilities. We're gonna have a focused attention on quickly removing graffiti on public property and graffiti code enforcement on private property, uh, in the downtown area. And, um, a focused attention on removal of litter, needles, and biological waste and general downtown cleanliness, uh, as well as increased maintenance activities in our downtown parks. Um, we will also have a higher presence in all of our parks, uh, downtown. And we'll be, uh, utilizing resources, uh, from, uh, our Parks Department to help us, uh, with that initiative. So we just wanted to provide you all with, um, information before it got out to the public in terms of this, uh, initiatives that we are currently underway. And as the chief said, we're driven by data and, uh, driven by, um, a need to, uh, a, address this problem. We hope that we will have lots of lessons learned, that we might be able to apply to other parts of our community. And, um, as I said, a press release will be going out, um, after, uh, our discussion today. Just listing of these, uh, initiatives as well as, uh, information about, uh, a webpage that, uh, a project page that we are establishing for, um, updates and for the community to, to follow kind of the, the initiative. And, um, Mayor, I think, uh, Councilmember Turner has her hand up.
It's really just a brief one. Um, I keep hearing this term, it's new to me, quality of life issues and how they're different than crime issues. That may help us when we're discussing it to explain what that means, if there's gonna be a document. I just learned the term today in a previous meeting.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll be able to do that. And especially, um, Patrick, that's good feedback in terms of when we go to Environment and Safety Committee that we further embellish on that.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing this to us and staying on the front end of communication on this one. I think, um, much like we were just talking with the water and WLOS, I mean, I mean, this is how we prefer to get it. And I think it's very helpful. And just a general appreciation for the chief and everyone that's participating in all of these fast-moving pieces around downtown and safety. Um, just a big thank you. I know we're busy all days, every day, every week, so to layer something in, especially in what kind of feels like an emergency way, um, is a big deal. And I just wanted to share my appreciation.
Thank you. Councilmember Omer?
Yeah, similarly, um, you know, so much of the conversation around public safety has been around our short staffing in the police department. And so to be able to expand, to do new things towards public safety, just makes me really proud and grateful. Um, and I'm excited to see the amount of collaboration we're looking at here where it's, you know, us working with both, both fire and police departments, with the sheriff's department, with all these other places. Cause we really, we need to show a unified front to interrupt, prevent, and reduce crime. And it needs to be downtown and in the neighborhoods that live in the fear of violence all the time. So I'm just impressed by the responsiveness with the amount of resources we're working on. And I know that we're looking good at maybe possibly getting 15 more officers sworn in this year pending. We'll see if everyone follows through, but it feels like the challenge we've had with attrition and, and just like the, the, the deep loss. Like I think that we might've stopped that gap and we're moving in the right direction. I feel like we might've hit a bottom and we're moving out. And this, this shows that to me as well. Lots of ifs, but gratitude.
Thank you very much. Uh, one, one thing that, um, uh, well, uh, Ms. Roney, uh?
I have, I, I have a lot of appreciation and a whole big bucket of hope for what's possible with this pilot. Um, and I've heard a lot about crime prevention and what sounds a lot like nuisance abatement, but I haven't heard a say explicitly anything about quality services for people when they're in crisis. And when I look at what's happening in Durham and the successes they're having as they're growing their program, when I've, um, see the community paramedics in action in Buncombe County, because that's at the heart of the issue, the outcome is less crime and more safety for the most vulnerable people in our community. So if, I wonder if we're coming at this with sort of the Band-Aid instead of the root? And I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to like really drive home that we wanna provide good services to people when they're in crisis.
Ms. Roney, thank you for, um, that, um, comment. And it is exactly, I believe, why we keep emphasizing reimagining public safety is a community effort and an initiative that it's gonna take all of us. Um, certainly there are things that, uh, and, and the mayor says this a lot about, you know, um, lanes that we as municipalities are in. And I think that we have, we have, uh, extended and gotten out of our lane a lot in terms of delivering services that, um, um, we haven't traditionally done or, uh, uh, or maybe have had the level of expertise on our staff to deliver. We think that the community responder program is, uh, an excellent complement to, uh, what the community paramedics are doing and what, um, uh, Park and Rec is doing and what, uh, our Asheville police are doing. And, and, and we, 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 we're looking at this as how do we stitch together all of those things related to, um, public safety? And we use this term on the quality of life. Quality of life is simply about people being comfortable in the, in the space that they're in. And I, I, I'm hoping that with this combination of efforts and initiatives, um, that, um, we're kind of getting out of our lanes and we're complementing and supplementing. We do need support though from county, uh, from healthcare providers, uh, from shelters, from lots of other folks. And this actually leads into, and I don't know, uh, Ms. Roney, if you have a follow-up, but it leads up to the part of the, um, press release that has not only what the city is getting ready to initiate, but it also has a section about, you know, what you can do. That is the, the general public and the, and, and the help that we need from them to address this, this issue. Um, so Ms. Roney, I didn't know if you had a follow-up?
Appreciate that. I just, I've, I've been, I've been noticing the missing part about us providing good quality service outcomes when people are in crisis. And then maybe there's other ways to say it, but if our focus is on presence, um, that can help to build relationships and that presence can result in people feeling more safe and that can improve quality of life. Um, but if we're not having a goal of meeting people when they're, we're in, they're in crisis, it, it leads to people being unsafe and then moving farther out to the edges into our neighborhoods, which has a different impact on quality of life. So just trying to, trying to, like I said, hold a lot of hope and a, um, a lot of possibility, but just, um, a desire for us to focus on that, um, the folks who are in deep crisis in our community.
And, and I totally understand those sentiments. I also, uh, think that, um, we are in the trial and error, uh, part of trying to be as responsive and, uh, as possible to meet the needs of, of, of our community and those that are in need. Uh, what we will have the community responders do is actually get data, have those conversations with people in crisis so that we truly understand what the, um, uh, range of needs are. So we look at this situation, uh, outside looking in. And, and, and I think that hopefully, uh, with conversations with, um, with people in the community, it will help us better understand their daily walk. And, and I think that's what we've gotta get closer to. You know, what are those real, you know, real needs that may not be the city can, you know, can respond to them, but there may be other agencies and entities that, that can, that we can partner with, uh, refer to. Um, so, uh, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a collective effort, has to be. Uh, anything else? We, again, will be sending out, um, the press release probably in another, um, 30 minutes to an hour. We do appreciate you all's time and I definitely appreciate, uh, the, um, the other departments who, um, who are working so hard on so many things, on so many fronts. And, um, and the ask of them to, okay, um, we need you to redirect, figure it out. But we can do this. And the attitude of all of the departments is, we can do this. And so we're in it. And I appreciate your help.
Deborah, and just, um, following your, your thankfulness, um, I wanna thank you and your team and all the folks on this. Um, our police department and our fire department, and I know we've got others that aren't even here that are gonna be doing this work and our parks and rec department. Uh, you know, we are really facing a complex problem and it takes time to figure out how to best address it and how to work well with our partners who are also trying to figure out creative new ways to address it, whether it's with the community paramedic program or the sheriff stepping in, um, to assist downtown. You know, we're, we, I, I recognize that the community can sometimes feel like it's not happening fast enough and folks are impatient. Um, uh, and I can appreciate that, uh, as well. But, um, but I'm very thankful that this is coming together. And I, I, you know, having, having seen new things tried, I'm expecting that we'll have some outcomes that are positive, some that we think need to be changed or tweaked. Um, so I, you know, I really appreciate that. And I, and, you know, our fire department fortunately is not, uh, experiencing much of a staffing issue at all, but our police department is incredibly strained. So I, I'm very thankful that they're figuring out how to, uh, focus on downtown. And I know the chief has been laser-focused on violent crime and gun violence. And, um, that's something that doesn't always go noticed in the broader community, but I, I, I. in the broader community, but I, I, I appreciate that that's been the number one focus for the police department and limited, trying to apply limited resources. So I appreciate you reassuring us that we're not going to see issues in other areas, but I know that's a serious concern for the police department. And finally, on that note, I did speak with Senator Tim Moffett last week about our Senator Julie Mayfield's push for a bill that would allow for non-sworn personnel to do things like handle traffic accidents and reports where there are not injuries to help relieve some of the strain on the police department. And all signs are looking good that that will pass this session, but of course, we all sort of need to keep urging that forward. And hopefully that will happen. That to me is, could be an exciting development for us to help relieve some of the, the pressure on personnel issues in the police department. So just wanted to add that note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think that is the last agenda item for today. We know we've got a, a lot of follow-up to do and we will provide that information to you Friday or at the latest Monday. And we appreciate your time.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great weekend.
Thanks. Have a good weekend, everybody. Bye.
Bye.